September ninth, two thousand twenty twenty meeting of the Manitou Springs Planning Commission. And first item of business is approval of the minutes of the August twelfth meeting. Anybody would like to make?
I'll move approval of the minutes from Wednesday, August twelfth, two thousand twenty meeting. Well, oh, you know what? I can't do it. I was not here for half of it.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes that were submitted in the packet for the August. Well, oh, twenty twenty meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? And all in favor, hold, raise your hand to. That is. Four with two abstentions. Okay, so moving on, we'll start the business meeting. I'll just start by describing the process we follow. I'll call an item for consideration and planning staff will describe what the request is, what their analysis is and what their findings and recommendations are. Following that, we'll allow the applicant to speak and state their case. And following that, we'll open the hearing to the public as a formal public hearing and anyone in the public is entitled to state their opinion on the item and send, but basically stick to the item under consideration and following that will vote to approve, deny, possibly will table an item and possibly will modify it in some way. And as we go through the process, we're guided by our municipal code. We're not legislators. We're a quasi judicial body and we'll be making our decisions based on what's in the municipal code. That's the extent of our authority. And with that, are there any conflicts or quasi judicial conversations to disclose? Okay, and as we go through this tonight, I'd like to do a little bit different with the commission if it's been, you know, sometimes a little chaotic with people speaking at the same time. So as they do, you know, I think it's a good model how council does it. If if you wish to speak, just raise your hand and I'll recognize you. And hopefully I'll recognize people in order of when they raise their hand and that way we'll keep from having collisions and have a more coherent conversation. So with that, I will call the first item is unfinished business minor conditional use two thousand three vacation rental three forty one Oklahoma Road, Scott Hunt applicant.
Christine is is Scott in the audience?
I'm looking. I don't see Scott. Scott, if you're one of the attendees, could you raise your hand?
Or anybody that might be representing this item?
Okay, I don't see anyone raising their hand.
So I've not been, we've not heard anything from the applicant. He's was sent all of the information, the staff report and everything. And I was noting today that we've not had any response from him. I kind of, I am hesitant to start into the staff review without the applicant actually being present. So maybe hopefully, maybe, I don't know what you want to do, Mr. Chair, but maybe we could move to another item. And then if he's just running late, we could come back to this one.
Okay, I think that's I'm comfortable with that unless there's some objections, if someone would like to move to amend the
Mr. Chairman, I move to postpone this item to see if we have the applicant appear.
Okay, so just move it to later in the agenda.
Correct.
Well, if I was, sorry, if I was in the general public, I wouldn't be too pleased to hear that. They may have to sit through this entire meeting. Could which could be a long one and may or may not be on the agenda. I mean, he's first up, he's not here.
Yeah, I you know, I, it's a pretty hefty request. There's a lot of verbiage and I would, you know, like I would prefer to err on the sake of at least giving the applicant an opportunity to show up. And I think some of the other items will go fairly smoothly. And so I would propose moving it, you know, try to do item three and four and then come back to this.
That I would recommend. Yeah, not waiting to the end of the agenda, but do the next two related items. And then if if there's no applicant still, you know, then you may want to postpone till the next month or whatever, but we could certainly check back in.
Yeah, okay, is so Julia made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Well, are we are we making a motion to change it after the the fourth item?
Yes.
Julia?
Yes, I guess.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. Okay. And that looks like David, are you there?
I am here. I had trouble signing in and if if you've got a full quorum, I will just apologize and step back.
Oh, if you're not feeling up to it, that's fine if
No, 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 I'm feeling up to it.
Yeah, no, you'll give us an odd number. That's a good thing.
Okay, good. Sorry, I'm late tuning in.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, so with that, then we'll do item number three, which is my preliminary plat two thousand one. It's a major subdivision one one oh one to one nineteen Becker's Lane, Eddie Bishop applicant.
And so I probably should check and make sure that the applicant is in the audience for this one.
I do not see Mr. Bishop at this point. Dylan, do you see him? I do not.
I do not.
Well, we're just batting a thousand here. Do we have any applicants for any of the items in the audience?
Sarah Blakesley is here. She's with the item five, three thirty via Linda Vista.
And Logan Wheeling on the same item.
You want to move to that one and then come back to these others?
Okay, which one is that?
That's three thirty via Linda Vista. Item, so it's actually five and six, I think it is.
Okay, I if there's a motion to do that, we could move on.
I'll make a motion that we hear item five. Next.
Item five and then six.
Yes.
They're a team there.
Actually, it's yeah, five and six. Thank you.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous and let's have to scroll down a thousand pages here to get there. Okay, so we're gonna do. And I assume you want to do these together, Michelle?
Yes, please.
Okay, so item five is variance two zero eleven, front yard setback of five feet at three thirty via Linda Vista, Sarah Blakesley and Logan Wheeling applicants. And item six, variance two thousand twelve variance, variance thirty two feet at three thirty via Linda Vista, Sarah Blakesley and Logan Wheeling applicants.
Thank you. So the applicants are requesting approval of a thirty two foot building height where twenty five feet is required and a five foot front yard setback where twenty feet is required. I'm sorry, the height is twenty five feet is required. And a five foot front yard setback where twenty feet is required to allow the construction of a new single family residence on the property. This is actually the fourth time the variances have been requested for the property. Since variances are only valid for one year from approval, the previous requests have all expired. In nineteen ninety seven, owners at that time applied for and were approved variances to allow a thirty three foot building height and a five foot front yard setback. In two thousand, another set of owners requested the same height and setback variances and were also approved. And then again, in two thousand four, those same owners from two thousand changed their building plans and requested a thirty seven foot height and five foot front yard setback, which was also approved. Staff notes the front yard setback in this zone was reduced since the processing of the prior requests from twenty five feet to twenty feet. So same setback requested, but a slight slightly less of a variance because we reduced that front yard setback requirement. The front yard setback variance request remains the same as was approved clear back in nineteen ninety seven and and those other applications that I've just noted. The current height variance proposal asks for an additional seven foot of building height. Previous approvals for for up to twelve foot over the allowed height. Staff notes the current proposal is for one foot less than the first two heights at height variance requests and five feet less than the request in two thousand four. The application, as have the previous proposals, states justifications for the requests are related to the topography, geologic conditions and drainage. There's a drainage way on the site which impacts the placement of any house. Staff believes the conditions and the justifications for the variance request are well documented, both in this application and in previous requests. The application notes the property has a steep drop off within a few feet from the street edge and slopes are generally thirty percent more or less in the area of home construction. Because this lot was platted approximately forty five years ago, there was no designation of no build area on the property for those steep slopes. Therefore, subdivision waiver for construction in those slope areas isn't required. The applicants have obtained and provided a geologic hazards report as required for construction into anything over seventeen percent slope that has changed under our more recent hazard mitigation standards that we've incorporated in the code. Planning Commission may authorize variances from the requirements. As noted by the code, a variance is an extraordinary remedy and the criteria in the code are intended to be limitations on the commission's power to authorize variances, the existence of previous nonconforming structure is not grounds for issuance of a variance and variances must run with the land. The planning commission must find all of the following criteria have been met. An endorsement of a variance by adjacent landowners, although good information does not relieve the applicant from meeting the requirements in the variance section of the code. So in regard to the variance criteria, I'm just going to note staff's response to each of those items and not read the criteria themselves. In regard to number one, the application notes the topography, geology and drainage on the site dictate the location of a home. Moving the structure back to the twenty foot front setback would place it in an area of sandstone outcroppings and drainage and require extraordinary measures to access from the street. Placing the proposed square footage in a narrower, taller footprint creates less disturbance and environmental impact to the property and creates connection with the Linda Vista. It's not unusual for there to be similar issues as are found on this property, on other properties in the area. However, those issues appear to be more severe on this property and are likely the reason it is one of the last unbuilt sites in the subdivision. Staff finds the application provides the requested justification to meet number one criteria. Number two, the application states that because of the conditions on the lot, the location as proposed and a design that minimizes the building footprint is the most feasible and recommended way to develop this lot in order to avoid a number of issues that additional excavation and distance from the street creates. The application requests the same setback as the previous four applications. I think that would be actually the previous three three applications. And the applicants have worked with their architect to refine the design to reduce the proposed height below previous proposals. Moving the structure to another location on the site would not eliminate the need for all the variances and could increase both the height and lead to undesirable destruction of natural features on the property. Staff finds the proposed height and setback are the minimum that allow for reasonable use of the property and that the application conforms with criteria number two. Number three, the application indicates other properties in this area that have been granted both height and setback variances due to similar issues cited for this property, the property directly adjacent to this site to the south that has the same front setback as being requested in the application. The application includes maps and photos provided in the applicant's narrative showing surrounding properties that do not meet the zoning requirements. Staff finds the application conforms with criteria three. Number four, the applicants note the request is for new construction, not due to any previous action or a violation of the code by them. Again, if there has been three, there have been three previously approved variance requests for the same or similar relief as the current request. Staff concurs with the application's assertions and finds the application conforms to criterion four. Five, the application notes that under twenty two feet of the new home would project above the road level, which is consistent with other homes in the area. Staff notes, according to the elevation provided in the narrative on page ten, that this height is on is on only slightly more or slightly less than the front elevation, more than half of the home visible from the road will be just over ten feet above the street level. So that's it's both appearing to have a second floor, but over half of that elevation only looks like a single story building from the road. Again, the narrative notes there are other homes in the area at the same or similar setback. The five foot setback does place a significant portion of the parking in front of the garage technically into the platted right of way. You see the site plan on page three of the narratives that clearly shows this. However, the code required two off street parking spaces will be provided in the garage incorporated in the home. So the driveway parking is additional to the code requirement. As long as vehicles don't extend into the developed roadway, then placement of this additional parking is not an issue and as mentioned, not out of character for the area. Staff also notes that reasonable reasonable protection for adjacent properties is the public hearing process itself. The required mailed notice was sent to surrounding owners within two hundred feet of the subject property and the property was posted and the request advertised as required by code. We did receive two inquiries from the public at the writing of the report. Those are noted in the staff report. Anne O Terry from three sixty five via Linda Vista and Frank, and I don't know if I'm pronouncing this correctly, Rife or Reef from V three fifty via Linda Vista had inquiries and made some statements of concern. Staff did provide them the information they requested and we have not heard back. So they did not then provide actual comments and I don't know if they're present in the audience tonight. We'll we'll find that out. Both commenters expressed concern with vehicles pulling out from the property onto the Linda Vista. Staff notes the city must allow for vehicle access to the property. So a driveway along the property frontage will be part of any development and not directly related to the requested variances. Staff notes that via Linda Vista is also a paved street. Certainly not one of the most narrow streets that Manitou enjoys and this property is two south of the cul-de-sac at the end of the roadway. So via Linda Vista has relatively low traffic volumes and there isn't much access left, you know, many, many properties left after this one that would need to go all the way to the end of the Linda Vista in order to access that property. So low traffic volume and and probably not that many driving past this point. No adverse comments or negative recommendations have been made by city departments or outside reviewing agencies. Colorado Springs Utilities required that the applicants provide additional information regarding the proposed homes' distance from an existing electrical line. That was found to be more than a minimum requirement. And so they have recommended approval of the request. Staff finds this criterion criterion number five is met by the proposal. Number six, the application cites the similar architectural design of other homes in the area to the applicant's own design aesthetic and the area visible from the street will be compatible with other homes. The applicants have taken steps to ensure that the proposed home site is suitable for the construction by seeking soil and geologic evaluations, which does not protect surrounding properties from potential, which does protect surrounding properties from potential negative impacts such as slope destabilization and preserves environmental features and existing drainage patterns on the lot itself. Certainly, this lot's been unbuilt on for many years and neighbors are used to unobstructive views across the property. However, this is a legally platted lot for which there are some development rights and the city has no protections for views from private property. Staff finds the proposal conforms with criterion number six. In regard to number seven, the application cites justifications related to the items in A through C in this criterion. Staff concerns concurs with the application's assertions and finds the proposal meets criterion seven and substantial justice has been complied with through the through the due process the public hearing provides. Senior Planner Karen Birch told provided an evaluation of the planned Manitou goals and policies that the commission has in the staff report. Staff believes the proposal is consistent with plain Manitou goals and policies cited by planner Birch told. The home construction will require wildfire mitigation evaluation by the fire department as well as the geologic hazards report already provided. There is no flood plain on the property. There's drainage, but not not flood plain area. Again, there's no been no adverse comments received regarding the request from the various reviewing entities. So staff believes that the conditions existing on the property, which have previously justified the granting of similar variances have been well documented in the current proposal. The applicants have submitted a plan which lowers the building height from previously approved proposals. The current design and lower height reduce the general impacts of the new construction. Staff recommends approval of V twenty eleven and V twenty twelve. There was a typo there that I wanted to correct so that both of those variance numbers are referenced to allow a five foot front yard setback where twenty feet is required and and seven foot additional building height for a total of thirty two feet where twenty five feet is required with the following conditions. Number one, the height and front yard setback variances are approved for the configuration and placement of the building as proposed. No further construction, i.e. enlargement, we can or reconfiguration is approved under the variance and such changes would require further review by planning commission. Staff recommends the findings as noted, one, two, and three, and notes the variances would be valid for one year from approval and will expire should a building permit for the new home not be obtained during that period. A written request for an extension would need to be presented to the planning director at least thirty days prior to to the date of any expiration and the planning director may authorize up to one additional year if good cause is demonstrated. And that's the report. I'm happy to answer questions.
Anybody have any questions for staff? Okay.
Sorry.
Dave?
Michelle, I I think this is is not an issue, but figure one in their appliance report, very comprehensive drawings, but it looks like the five foot setback clips part of the building, but it's impossible to tell there. And I really couldn't gather it from any of the other. I mean, what they're what if this is approved, they've still got to meet that five foot setback, but you're satisfied that the drawings they presented match that?
Well, they would have to meet the five foot setback and I did notice this this little corner. I couldn't really tell whether that I think that dark line is is not. I think that's either I don't, I wouldn't be a planter, but there it's something I don't believe is part of the building. But it does nick that that little corner of what we would consider what looks to be the two story area. And so that if it's a five foot setback, they can't have any portion of the building into that five feet or you know, beyond that five feet. And so they may need to do a small adjustment on their site plan. But five feet is what they've asked for.
And if we approve it, that's what they get and they have to meet it. It doesn't matter ultimately what is on the drawings then. Okay.
Any other questions for staff before we move to the applicant? Okay, can we bring the applicant over? I see.
So here comes Sarah. And we have one more. Logan, did you already get Logan? Okay, great. Okay, great.
Okay. Okay, it's your turn to speak now, Sarah and Logan and what are your thoughts on the staff report?
Thank you, Dylan.
Name and address, please.
Great, thank you.
Yes. My name is Sarah Blakesley and I reside at two, three, five, three Gilpin Avenue, Colorado Springs, Colorado. Eight oh nine, one, zero.
And the other applicant, let's state your name and address for the record.
Sure, Logan Wheeling, same address, two, three, five, three Gilpin Avenue, Colorado Springs, eight oh nine, one, zero.
Okay, and your thoughts on the staff report and anything you'd like to add to the record?
Yeah, so thanks for the staff for doing such a thorough job with their their report. I think it really captured all of our key points in our narrative. I wanted to address the earlier comment about the impediment into the the five foot setback zone. This is, you can more clearly see this documented on the actual site plan, which is part of the the variance application. But as you can see, there's no part of the structure that's contacting the foundation in the five foot setback zone. And this is documented in the darker dash dotted line. What you're seeing in that first picture in that narrative is actually just a little bit of the roof overhang for the garage. So it's none none of this actual structure is being built, constructed in that five foot zone. So with that said, we feel that the the reasons outlined in our narrative pretty thoroughly documented, but I wanted to highlight a couple of things. In addition to that, we have worked with the Architectural Control Committee within our neighborhood as since applying for this variance with the city. And they have expressed their support for this height and setback as as well as our architectural design. So this provides further support for the fact that this is something that's in line with the character of the existing neighborhood and that in general the larger consensus of the neighborhood is that they're in favor of this particular construction. So we hope that with getting this variance applied for this new for, uh, this new construction on this lot that sat vacant for over 40 years, the fourth time's a charm. I, we feel pretty confident that we're going to, uh, be the ones to get, uh, a home built on this site. As, as you know, it is a very challenging build site. But I think as, as time has gone on, we've, um, got better building techniques and, um, we've done some thorough structural engineering and feel pretty confident about the, um, the plans that we've drafted. Anything you would add to that? Okay, and I think that's, that summarizes our comments here. If there's anything from the general public, uh, we will open up to that.
Hey, would anybody, would anybody on the commission like to comment on, ask a question? Okay, um, if, at this point, it looks like, um, people, we, we don't have any more questions for you and if we do have any, we'll bring you back up to speak again.
All right.
So now the, uh, public hearing is opened. If anybody in the audience would like to speak to this item, uh, raise your hand and we'll bring you over. Okay, and I see we do have, uh, one person with their hand raised, Tom Plum. Okay. You were up, uh, could you state your name and address for the record, please? And if you want to turn your video on, then we can see you.
Unmute. There you go.
You guys are professionals, obviously, for, uh, this public amateurs. So my name is Thomas Plum, 310B Linda Vista. I'm on the south side. You just heard from Frank who's on the other side of the house and, uh, we have talked with the Arctic Commission who are associated with the Garden of God Estates and that. I'm surprised that they're here, but I have not heard any concerns with any of the requested core variances. And, uh, we've worked with, uh, Syria and Logan and, uh, for the reference.
Okay, thank you. Would anybody else in the audience like to speak on this? Okay, um, seeing no more hands raised, um, I guess we'll close the public hearing and we're at the table. Any, uh, tip?
I had a question for Michelle. Uh, my impression was that roof overhang were part of the consideration for setbacks. Is that not true?
Yeah, roof overhangs, although they cannot hang over someone else's property, that is not where we calculate setback from.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Okay, when, uh, any other questions or would anybody like to entertain a motion if there are no more? Tip?
I, I'm in favor of these variances, uh, and I really appreciate, uh, care that staff always does and did again this time in making the rationales. The one thing I, 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 and I'm happy to make a motion, the one thing I would like to say, just to parse things a little bit, is that for me, the, it's helped, I'm a historian, as you know, and to have the, um, history of previous variances is something that is good background. And I think it's, uh, something that provides context. But I wouldn't personally be making a decision on the base, basis of that because things can change so dramatically. Expectations, the community standards and light can change. And so I find actually the reason to make the motion that I'll be happy to make is, uh, is, uh, based on all of the other aspects of the report, not the, the, uh, anything about the fact that there were previous variances. So I just wanted to separate that up for the record.
Okay, so is that a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion. I have to go back to get the numbers to approve variance number 2011 and variance 2000. Do I have to do them separately or together?
You can do them together.
Okay, so I'm going to approve variance 2011 and variance 2012 with all state's findings and, uh, recommendations.
Okay, and, um,
I'll second that.
Okay, gee, great. Okay, and is there any, um, more discussion? And, uh, Mike?
I just want to say before, um, Sarah and Logan log off that that application was one of the most thorough applications, applications I've ever seen. There was, um, a lot of work went into that and that was really well done.
Yes, I was, I was telling, uh, Dylan that, uh, we should give that to applicants, potential applicants to show them what, what we would, would like to see.
Yeah, that's a, there's high standards on Linda Vista. I have. So, um, with that, if there's no more discussion, then all in favor, raise your hand. And that is unanimous, so it's all done. Great, so now, um, it looks like, uh, Mike?
Well, I, I was gonna say, maybe time to table, the 341 Oklahoma Road in Eddie Bishop's applications.
I was just gonna let you know that I was contacted, um, earlier by Mr. Bishop. He was having some trouble getting in, so we worked through that and he is now here. I have not been able, I was not able to get hold of Mr. Hunt for 341 Oklahoma. So, um, so we could move forward with Mr. Bishop's properties. And I'll leave it to you to decide what you'd like to do with 341 Oklahoma.
Yeah, well, I, I'd like to go ahead with, um, Mr. Bishop's items now. So, let's go back then, that'll be, uh, start with, and, and do you want to take, I assume we'll take these individually, Michelle?
Yes.
Okay, so the next item will be, um, preliminary plat, plat 2001, major subdivision 101, 119 Becker's Lane, Eddie Bishop applicant.
And I'm sorry, I have to just, uh, I've gotten everything out of, uh, out of order and I just need to grab my correct. Uh, okay, here I am. Sorry about that. Okay, so, um, the applicant is requesting replating, uh, of the property where townhomes are currently being constructed. Uh, the property was rezoned in 2017 and approved for townhome development with a setback in heights variance in 2018. This request is to plat property into eight lots and a common tract per the layout of the townhome complex. This is a major subdivision because there are more than five lots being created. Public improvements and requirements associated with the site development have been addressed through the major development plan approval. An updated preliminary plat second page has been provided since the last staff report. And following, uh, this item on the agenda is the final plat request. The first page of the proposed final plat has been utilized, uh, for this review since no first page was provided with the preliminary plat document, uh, likely because there was, really wasn't any change between them. Staff also included, uh, that first page of FP 2001 with this report. So you have in regards to the preliminary plat, uh, the name is the Manitou Town Homes. Uh, the, uh, legal description, eh, of, uh, the lot, the three lots being replatted is not a, noted in the text area under the subdivision name and the total square footage of, uh, over 30,000 square feet or 0.69 acres is provided. That information is on page one of the plat, uh, in the text in the upper left corner. And then sizes of individual lots in the tract are shown on the second page. Name and address of owners of record, uh, the subdivision and, and adjacent property owners. You're required, although we require the, um, notice to surrounding property owners within 200 feet. Uh, the code wants, uh, information on the, um, immediately surrounding owners. And so that has, uh, been provided and, um, the owner of record is actually the Manitou LLC. Mr. Bishop is the principal of that. Um, that's consistent with what we find on the assessor's record. The name and address of the surveyor or engineer, the, the title block for the surveyor is located on, in the lower left of page one. And there's also a surveyor's statement on page one that contains the name of the surveyor responsible for the plat. The, uh, preparation of the plat is noted as July 24th, 2020. The scale and north arrow are provided on page two with the plat graphic. Uh, there are no section or quarter section lines that intersects, uh, this property, so those wouldn't be shown on the plat. Vicinity map is provided on page one. The, uh, as noted earlier in the report, the property was rezoned in 2017 from the commercial zone to, to the high-density residential designation. Immediately surrounding properties are commercial, basically to the south and the east and low-density residential to the north and the west. Uh, staffs provided the section of the zoning map that illustrates this property and then the surrounding properties in regard to zoning so that the application, or I'm sorry, that the commission can see, uh, clearly see what that mix of, of zoning is. In regard to location of land intended to be conveyed or reserved for public use, there are no right-of-way dedications proposed or requested. The plat includes a tract that will be in the common ownership of the Townhome Association. Basically, staff is recommending that that be a lot. Usually, when we see something left as a tract, it's for some sort of future purpose or future replating. Not all the time, but a lot of times that's the indication of why you designate something a tract. And so we would prefer to have this listed as a lot. It's the common ownership area and there's nothing additional planned, uh, in the future in regard to that. Unless the applicant or his surveyor has an overriding reason, uh, that's, that's the staff's recommenda- recommendation. There weren't any, uh, land dedications or fees provided for schools, parks, or open space when the Garden of the Gods Village was platted. There aren't any plans for trails or open space involving this property. Therefore, fees in lieu of land, uh, would be appropriate. Staff has, um, calculated that it's just over $5,200. Staff recommends collection of those fees in lieu, uh, at, uh, under the approval of a final plat and prior to filing that plat document. Dimensions, uh, square footage and location of lots are provided. Land use of both the lots and the tract are noted on the preliminary plat. Uh, the lots indicate residential and the tract, uh, indicates it's for accessing utilities. In regard to item J, there are no roads being, uh, created and no need for new, new utility rights of way or easements within the plat. It's in an area where utilities are in place in the streets and, uh, surrounding properties are already served. There is an easement, uh, for the existing drainage way at the rear of this property. That is shown on the plat and it has the book and page number of that easement filing noted. Uh, that easement is actually to the city. The city maintains that drainage way back there, uh, all along the properties that front Becker's Lane, basically. Um, and it was a improvement project that we did many years ago, grant-funded project to help, uh, reduce the impact for, of flooding on those properties. The grades of Becker's Lane and Via San Miguel along the property frontage have been provided on, in the preliminary plat graphic. And again, there are no section or incorporation lines, uh, in this area of this, of the subject property. Uh, there is an existing, a- as I noted in regard to areas subject to inundation in the existing drainage ditch, uh, running through the property along the western boundary, uh, that I discussed above. So that, that is, uh, noted and the floodplain is actually, the 100-year floodplain is also noted across the property. The, uh, no drainage improvements were found to be necessary under the major, made, I'm sorry, the major development approval. So there are no plans for, uh, requiring any kind of improvements at this point. Contours have been added to the preliminary plat graphic and no areas of 30% or greater slope are indicated. Therefore, no areas of no build, uh, are required. The structures associated with the development of the subdivision are under construction and are shown, those footprints are shown on the preliminary plat graphic. That no access, uh, to other adjacent properties is required, uh, to be provided. Uh, so none is, is shown on the plat. The existing land use, uh, now is residential. The legal doc- documentation for homeowners association. The applicant has indicated that there will be an HOA association and the document, um, has not yet been provided, but will be. Stat- staff notes a separate statement under, um, item B, uh, on page, uh, four has not been provided, uh, but much of the information, uh, is found in the plat itself. So the total area, as noted previously, is 0.69 acres or 30,119 square feet. The proposed land uses are residential on the lots and accesses, access and utilities on the tract. Eight dwelling units on the land, uh, area under consideration. The gross density would calculate to be 12 units an acre. The high-density residential zone allows up to 15 units an acre, so we have conformance with that. The estimated number of gallons per day, uh, that, uh, has not been provided and was not required under the major development, uh, because this is a redevelopment of what was a, um, pre-existing, uh, motel with many more, uh, units than the eight dwelling units proposed. Uh, the Public Services Department did require, uh, all that information because they were already providing service to that previous land use. The estimated construction costs of streets and related facilities, uh, was also addressed under the previous major development approval. The financial surety regard, required for public and quasi-public improvements, uh, required was $93,750. That's now, uh, been reduced as, as the improvements like the, uh, water and sewer, uh, utility lines, uh, have gone in. So, eh, that amount is, is less at this point. Um, the fire protection plan, again, that was not required, uh, under this. There is already an existing, uh, fire protection plan. Basically, the, um, it was addressed under the major development plan and under the building permit. The applicant has, uh, submitted the required calculations and documentation and been approved for a fire suppression sprinkler system, uh, that will be in each townhome unit. Uh, because the development was approved and is under construction with plans for a sprinkler system, staff did not require the above information, uh, at this time. It's, we're already passed, uh, re- restating or, or requiring a, a plan that's already been addressed by the fire suppression sprinkler system. The public facilities and service impact report. Again, this was not, uh, required based on the major development plan approval, which addressed, um, each of the same information. And in light of the current construction being underway on the property, staff has recommended the identification of any area of 17 to 29% slope. In addition to any, any areas of 30% or greater slopes. I know, no such areas, uh, appear to be, uh, found on the property. Staff has not found issues to indicate the proposal would be out of conformance with Plan Manitou. The preliminary plat has not been reviewed by other city departments or outside agencies because of the review associated with the major development plan. And then also there was a lot of review associated with issuance of the building permits. Um, and the required for, for, as I said, is required for issuance of the permits. Staff does intend to seek review of the major subdivision between planning commission and city council. If this preliminary plat is approved and the final plat is on, uh, which is on the same agenda, is recommended, ended for approval. That review would primarily be for any technical issues with the plat document itself. You know, we were already said, substant- You know, we're already substantially beyond where we need to look at things like utilities and that type of information. And so I do intend to send the plat through our city engineer primarily to review for any technical issues with the final plat document. Make sure that that has everything that it's supposed to from a closure and arcs and angles and all those types of things from that, from that kind of standpoint. Staff is attempting to facilitate the plating of the property, so the applicant will be able to sell units he already has contracts on within a reasonable timeframe. Continued delays with processing of the replat may result in the applicant losing buyers. Given that the development of the property has been approved by the city and that the development is underway, the review of the preliminary and final plats are at a different stage than if the subdivision were the first step in the redevelopment process. Public improvements, et cetera, are already reviewed and those requirements have been addressed. So in regard to staff recommendation, it's the Planning Commission's role to approve the preliminary plat. The final plat follows this, the preliminary plat is approved, is intended to be heard by the Planning Commission at this same meeting. In reviewing a preliminary plat application, the Planning Commission shall consider whether the preliminary plat addresses items A through F in the subdivision code. Based on the above criteria for approval of the preliminary plat, staff recommends approval of PP 202001 to replat lots five, six, and seven, block eight, Garden of the Gods Village subdivision, as shown in the Manitou Townhome subdivision, with the following conditions. One, addition to the preliminary plat document, the zoning information on the subject property, and provide reasoning for the common areas to be a tract A or designate as Lot 9. And number two, additional documentation to be provided prior to the consideration of the plat before City Council. Estimated total number of gallons per day of water for domestic and fire use and estimated total number of gallons per day for sewage to be treated. That's, we just have that documentation in the file. And that is staff's recommendation. I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions for staff? Okay, no one else? I have one question, going back to the, I mean, you're going through this stuff. You were talking about the Q. Legal documentation for any homeowners association which may be involved. And I believe somewhere in the narrative you stated that there would be a, some kind of a documentation, document there, and it has not been presented.
Right.
And should, if that's a requirement of the preliminary plat, shouldn't that be a condition of approval?
Actually, I have made that, I believe, a condition of approval on the final plat. Or that it has to be submitted before it goes to council.
But is it required for the preliminary plat?
Yes, it's required for both, basically, but.
Okay, I guess I see that as a question, why, why we would approve this with at least, without at least having that be a requirement. At any rate, any other questions for the applicant? Okay, then let's bring the applicant over. I see he's in the audience now.
There he is. He should be available.
Can you see me?
Can you un, I guess you have to start your video. We hear you, but don't see you.
Okay, how do I do that?
Do you see a, start video somewhere on your screen? Are you on an iPad or a laptop?
I'm on my cellphone.
Okay. A smartphone?
And, well, I'm not very smart. The phone's smarter than I am. Okay.
I think as long as we can hear him, that's the important thing.
Okay.
Yeah, I've lost, I've lost video, but if you can still hear me.
Yeah, we can hear you. So you can state your name and address for the record first, please?
Sure. My name is Eddie Bishop, and I reside at 1346 Margot Lane, Colorado Springs, 80909.
Okay. It's now your opportunity to comment on the staff report, recommendations, and any other information you'd like to provide regarding the preliminary plat, which is what is under consideration right now.
Sure, I, well, pardon me. I think staff has done a very good job of outlining it. We've been following our development plan, and we've attempted to do this replat. Earlier this year, we were hoping to do it back in, back in the March and April timeframe. And then, you know, the world kind of changed a little bit, and we got delayed. But we're glad it's in front of the Planning Commission now. We've received some very good interest from the community and the public about our product. We have two units that are under contract that are scheduled to close mid-October, thereabouts. And, yeah, I, other than that, I don't have, oh, let me address the fact of the HOA, our homeowners association. I do have that. I just haven't presented the draft copy, the draft copy yet to Michelle or Christine. I can certainly send that on tomorrow, but it's been prepared by my attorney, Jane Fredman, and we've got things ready to go for you there.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? I see no hands raised, so with that, we'll put you aside. And if we have more questions, we'll bring you back. And now the public hearing is open.
Thank you very much.
Would anybody like to comment on this? And I see a hand raised, so bring the attendee over for come to comment.
Okay, I've brought Darlene over.
Hello. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Can you see me?
Yeah, we can't see you.
Okay, hold on. Got it.
Now we see you, okay.
Hi. Good evening, Planning Commission. Darlene Kennedy, 18, Violauma, Manitou Springs, Colorado. I guess the neighborhood is very perplexed as to why this process happened this way. I'm reading the city code now, the laws that we follow. And 1604060, no building permit shall be issued for construction or reconstruction of structures upon any land or addition to any building or structure situated on any land unless such land has been subdivided and platted in accordance with the procedure set out in this regulation. So I brought our dismay to the planning director, and she informed us that the previous planning director determined that the major development approval addressed the public improvements and financial assurances. So the city's interests were protected. The city's interests were not protected. There is no due process. How can you not approve this with people with contracts waiting to purchase these properties? All of your ability to approve this or deny it have gone away. And same with the plan, with the city council. The reason that the planning director gave, that the previous planning director, that the developer was anxious. Well, okay, a lot of people are anxious, but to not follow the city code is not acceptable. It's not acceptable in our city or anywhere else. If the planning director, the previous planning director, determined that the major development plan was okay to start building, she left the city in November. And city staff, according to the Pikes Peak Regional Building Department website, approved the building permit in January. There was plenty of time to right this wrong before the building permit was approved. There is no longer the ability for due process. There is no longer any way that you cannot approve this. And if you didn't, and the applicant appealed it, you would lose because the city code was not followed. And I am just baffled. This, this is not Eddie Bishop's fault. He was just doing what he could do. This is city staff's fault, and it has to stop. This, this skirting of the city code, skirting of the zoning code, has to stop. The processes are in place. Our city code is the law. I keep hearing, well, we're going to do a code scrub and everything's going to be better. A code scrub doesn't, doesn't force city staff to follow the code. And after the previous planning director left, well, maybe this should have all been made right, and it wasn't. It continued to situate until today. And today, you have no option but to approve this because citizens will be hurt. There are contracts on these properties. These people are due to close, as Eddie Bishop said, in October. So I, I ask you to not allow this to happen again. This is not right. And also, I need to tell you that I have heard from two of the neighbors that got two of the original letters. They have not gotten any letter this time at all. So I don't know if the letters were mailed. I don't know what the process is that you asked Mr. Bishop if the letters were mailed and when they were. Does he sign an affidavit saying he mailed them? I'm not sure. This is the third time now that we've been at this. And I'm not sure that the process has been followed yet. The other thing is, Ms. Anthony has brought up so many issues with the plat that haven't been addressed. Are we ready to look at this plat? And the other thing, just for the record, looking at the Manitou Townhomes plat, the as-platted note, and I'm sure the engineer will catch this, but if you compare it to the original Garden of the Gods Village plat, some of the dimensions of the property are not, are not correct. They are not what's on the original Garden of the Gods Village plat. So that needs to be addressed, too. So anyway, thank you for your time, and I appreciate you listening.
I think it was an unfortunate situation, and at the time that this was approved, we were in a transition without a planning director. So just I'd like to state that for the record. And Julia, did you have your hand up?
I was going to ask the testifier for clarification, but I think we're good.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there, I don't see any other hands raised in the audience.
Well, excuse me, Alan. So Ms. Kennedy, if I understand you correctly, you don't object to Planning Commission approving the plats, preliminary and final plats tonight. What you are asking for is that the city follow the code in the, in the future? Is that the essence of your request?
No, she's no longer at the podium, but I think that is accurate. And she has her hand raised again, so let's bring Ms. Kennedy back to answer that question, if we could.
Mr. Armstrong, yes, that is the case. And of course, if I had any objection to Mr. Bishop's development, what, what would we do now? The buildings are built. People have contracts. My due process and everybody else's due process has been taken away. And actually, that's a constitutional right, Mr. Armstrong. And it was staff's decision, and yes, that planning director is gone. But the building permit was approved in January, not in November when the planning director left. And the building permit was approved by city staff. And between November and January, that wrong could have been righted.
Well, I would just say that I, for one, you know, hear your frustration, and I appreciate the fact that you're taking such a reasonable attitude toward Mr. Bishop and his project and the neighborhood in general.
I would, I would ask staff to make sure that those letters did go out to the buffer properties because it doesn't appear everybody got one.
Okay, thank you. There's another hand raised now.
Hello, it's Eddie Bishop.
Oh, I see. Are you Pixel 3 XLIS?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Let me address the letters, no pun intended. I did mail, I did mail those out, and we have certification from the post office. And I believe I've sent that to staff, but we have received from the post. In fact, there were, there were two mailings that were sent out, I believe, July or March.
Okay, well, Mike?
Can I ask Mr. Bishop a question?
Yes.
Is it okay if we designate the common area is Lot 9 versus tract A?
Mr. Bishop, are you still with us? We can't hear you.
Yeah, I'm not sure his, it sounded like his connection was buffering or something.
Yeah, he raised his hand again for the Pixel SS. So I'm going to go ahead and click allow to talk. Eddie, if you're there, can you mute?
Yeah, hello, can you hear me now?
Yep, go ahead.
Was I asked a question? I did, oh, yeah, we're talking about tracking the plat. All the land outside of the foundation, outside of the footprint of the building, if you will, all of that is designated really as a utility. And this is a non-development. There are no plans to do any additions or any other improvements on the lot. Tract 9 serves as our utility.
It's really hard. You're kind of echoing. Could you try that again?
I'm going to suggest that he may be on speaker, and if he's on speaker, he could take it off. Maybe that'll solve the problem.
Hey, Mr. Bishop, did you hear that recommendation?
Hello.
That's feedback.
Wow.
Tip? Oh, yeah, now we can hear you.
Okay. Yeah, so again, tract nine or lot A, it doesn't matter to me. It's just for our utility.
Okay.
Okay, does that answer your question, Mike?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Now, this Pixel 3 XLs, okay, that went away. Okay. We're still in the public hearing. Is there anybody else who would like to comment on this? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing.
I just had one quick question. Since I was, I had a hiatus from the planning commission for a bit. Did you guys discuss formally in the planning commission, the development plan?
The major development, yeah, that was reviewed by both planning commission and city council.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that that had happened.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that was February of 2018. Or maybe March, somewhere in that winter 2018.
Right.
Okay, any other questions or comments or motions or? So I guess the public hearing is closed now. So we're at the deliberation, possible motions.
Well, after getting verbally reprimanded as appropriate, we have little choice but to approve this. So I'd like to make a recommendation to approve PP 2001 with staff's conditions, one and two.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? And being no discussion, then let's vote. All favoring, raise your hand. Okay, well, that's unanimous. I guess we can move on now to major subdivision final plat 2001, same address, Eddie Bishop applicant.
So this is much the same information as what we've already discussed. It is for the final plat, although not necessarily done frequently. The commission has in the past considered a final plat following a preliminary plat in order to facilitate a final approval and when warranted. There's no change. You know, it's the same name of the plat. It's the same size of the area. You know, it's the same park schools and open space recommendation. There is information required regarding monuments found and set and that type of thing. As staff noted during the preliminary plat discussion, I do want to send this to the city engineer just to make sure that things like dimensions line up and the plat closes and the things that they're more capable of doing as far as looking at those technical requirements. The mayor's signature line needs to be added. There's very little change from what we've already discussed. So I think what I will do is just go to the staff recommendation because I've pulled the items that need to be addressed over from the different aspects of the report and then kind of cuts to the chase. So the subdivision regulations state after reviewing the final application, the planning commission will forward a recommendation of approval or disapproval of the final plat to city council. Based on the information and evaluation in the preliminary plat and the evaluation in this report, staff recommends the planning commission forward a recommendation to city council for approval of major subdivision final plat 2001, replating lots five, six, and seven, block eight, Garden of the Gods Village subdivision, as shown in the Manitou Townhomes subdivision with the following conditions. Number one, changes to the final plat document as follows shall be submitted to the city prior to consideration by the city council. A, change to the designation of the common area to lot nine. B, add the required signature line for the mayor. C, label the areas outside of the subdivision as required by the code. Number two, payment of $1,763 in school, $553 in parks, and $2,894 in open space fees in lieu of land dedication shall be paid prior to the filing of the final plat. Three, the proposed homeowners association covenants, covenant documents shall be submitted prior to consideration of the major subdivision by city council and shall be filed concurrently with the final plat document. Four, the current title insurance on the property, as noted on plat note number two, shall be submitted to the city prior to consideration of the final plat by city council. Five, a certificate of taxes from El Paso County Treasurer's Office shall be provided to the city prior to consideration by city council. Six, additional documentation to be provided prior to consideration of the plat before the city council, the estimated total number of gallons per day of water and of sewer. Seven, the admitted preliminary plat and final plats and all the required associated documents noted above shall be submitted no later than Tuesday, September 22, 2020, in order for all documents to be reviewed by city departments, outside agencies, and the city engineer. The applicant shall provide any additional updates to the plat document as required by those entities. Eight, if submitted by the required date and assuming the agency review can be performed prior to when packets must be prepared for the meeting, the final plat shall be scheduled for public hearing by the city council on its October 6, 2020 meeting. Staff has noted the recommended findings. And then for the commission's information, according to the subdivision regulations, the city council will consider items A, B, and C before taking action on the final plat. And that is the recommendation.
Are there any questions for staff? Okay, I don't see any hands raised. Do you want to bring the applicant over?
It appears that we have lost. Oh, there he is. Okay, good call, Tom.
Hello?
Hi. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Eddie Bishop, 1346 Margot Lane, Colorado Springs, 80909.
Okay, you just heard the staff presentation. Do you have anything to add or any thoughts on?
No, I agree with staff and we'll provide all that information. The water usage is a new one on me, but we'll get all that information together and get it to you prior to your deadline.
Okay. Thank you. Would anybody on commission like to, any questions for the applicant? Okay, there don't seem to be any more questions for you. If we have more, we'll bring you back.
Thank you.
Hearing is open. Anybody in the audience would like to speak, just raise your hand. Okay, and I see no hands raised. So we'll close the public hearing and we're ready to deliberate and make a motion. Tip?
I move approval of FP 2001 with all staff's findings and recommendations.
Okay, we have a motion and Jane?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? And being no discussion, then we can vote by raising our hands. All in favor? That is unanimous. Okay, so this will be going to city council in October?
Yes. Should be October 6.
Maggie.
Christine?
Yeah, you know, I just wanted to take a minute. Thank you for reviewing both of those items. I just want to take a moment and acknowledge Ms. Kennedy's comments and contribution to the process over the last few months. I came on, as you know, as planning director. Earlier this year, I arrived later in February. As Ms. Kennedy noted, there were a number of items regarding this particular project that were already well underway, right? And there were several planning directors over the course of several months, probably one per month interim and full time, which I think put everyone involved in a difficult position, right? So my challenge then coming on, and I just want to take a minute to acknowledge this because I think it is important for us as planning commissioners, the public who's listening and as well as staff, to all be moving forward in the same direction. Construction was underway. And working closely with Mr. Bishop throughout this process has been necessary, right? We've received a great deal of feedback. Some of it has been contradictory to what is documented that I could find, including public input, things like that. So some of the challenges specific to this project have been unique. But I did want to just take a moment and acknowledge Ms. Kennedy's comments tonight and the feedback and the comments that she's provided to me. Literally, the first week that I was here, I attended a neighborhood meeting and this project came up. And so the input that she's provided has been useful and I appreciate that. And I think that not just from a planning commission perspective or planning staff perspective, but from the perspective of the city, there have been a number of lessons learned. And I think that those will be applied going forward. So I just want to thank you for your patience in this. And if there's any further questions or concerns and if someone wants to follow up with me and get in touch, I'm happy to talk with them about it. But thank you for letting me just take a moment to acknowledge that.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, so now we still have the, well, we can move through the two postponements and then decide what to do with the conditional use. So the next item of business is Verit's 2013 Parking 415 El Paso Boulevard. The Nettiger Harwell applicant on behalf of Sun Wellness Companies. And I assume companion to that, Major Conditional Use 2003, Mobile Food Truck 415 El Paso Boulevard.
So the request is that those items be postponed to October. Unfortunately, we were trying to facilitate this and we're under pretty quick turnarounds on everything. The applicant had sent a mailed notification. And unfortunately, there was an error with some of the notifications and there wasn't enough time to then cure that before we ran out of time, basically, before the meeting. And so we don't have any choice but to request postponement to the October meeting.
Is there a motion to postpone?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone. Is there a second?
Sorry.
Okay, and we have motion in a second. So with that, let's, all in favor of postponement, raise your hand. Okay, so that's unanimous. Those will be postponed. Now, back to 341 Oklahoma Road, Minor Conditional Use 2003. What do we want to do with that? We, you know, tip?
So I'm assuming that the applicant is still not here.
Yeah.
I guess that my, I could be talked out of this. But my tendency or my preference, I think, at this point would be to do the postponement to some date indeterminate or whatever. Michelle and Christine, I can't remember Dylan, the language, but basically put it into this right now. And then an application could be forthcoming after the moratorium. But I guess that, given the concerns, I read quite carefully several times this application and given the concerns of the neighborhood about dependability with questions, that's an essential quality to doing this kind of business. And that the applicant hasn't been in contact with you, Michelle, and didn't come, I think that I would be more comfortable with going ahead and postponing indefinitely. And then, you know, if at some point in the future he wants to come back, he can take into consideration all of the points that had been raised in the report and the feedback and do a new application. But that would be my preference at this point.
Carrie?
I'm with Tip. And the other thing, when I was reading it and actually looking at the property, the concern, I think the suggestion was that we could have considered approval with the parking getting figured out afterwards. And I almost think after looking at the property and how restrictive that parking at that site was anyway, I'd almost suggest that if this were to come back, that the staff approve parking or say, yes, this is a feasible project based on the parking before we even see it. Because I felt like we were going to go through an enormously long meeting to dig through that application, but we don't even know, based on, if you look at that property, whether it's even feasible to have it via.
Yeah, I probably concur, but I caution not to get into a discussion since we're not having the public hearing. I think it's fair, I like Tip's proposal and I'd certainly support that. Julia, you had your hand up?
I wanted to encourage us all to maintain the agenda item without the discussion of the intricacies of the application. And I support Tip's notion. I wanted to ask Michelle and Christine what the most appropriate action here is, if it is to postpone or if it is something else, as Tip suggested.
Christine, I don't know if you want to field this. You know, I think that either way, at this point, from a staff standpoint, I generally always try to err on the side of allowing applicants, you know, the most leeway. And so I would normally advocate for postponement to the next meeting. And then if the applicant either continued to not contact us or allow him the opportunity to formally withdraw the application so that we know that, you know, something didn't happen tonight that, you know, kept him from attending the meeting. But I can certainly understand why commission members feel that indefinite postponement is more appropriate. And certainly I can support either way.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, definitely. Um, yeah, we, we were actually talking about this afternoon that we hadn't heard from this applicant and expressing a bit of concern about that. I believe with an indefinite and postponement, even if he comes back in just a couple of weeks and within a couple of days and responds to us and indicates that there was in fact a problem and he'll be on and available and prepared in the next meeting or so, then, then we can certainly move in that direction. But the idea of an indefinite is probably, I think, the safest way to go for us so that we're not revisiting this each month. And that would be my specific recommendation. We will notify him following this meeting that his item was postponed and what this conversation was, if this is in fact the way we go. But that would be probably my recommendation. Just kind of based on where we are and in indefinite or indeterminate does not, does not tie our hands in any way either.
Okay. Do you want to make that motion tip to postpone to a date uncertain?
Sure, I would like to postpone to a date uncertain on my cup 2003.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. And there's no discussion, then we can vote on that. Raise our hands. Okay, and that is unanimous. Well, with that, I, you know, I apologize to all the audience that were here to listen to this item, but we did our best to. And you probably won't be seeing this come back anytime soon is my guess. Because that's what a date uncertain usually means. So with that, we'll move on to other business item eight. It's planned manateau update. Karen Burke told and Christine Long Burke present.
Sure. So it looks like Dylan is bringing over Karen. It sounds great. Tonight, we wanted to bring to you Karen and I wanted to bring to you plan manatee. And the annual update, we are moving through the summer and fall seasons of budget and various updates that go to boards and commissions and city council. As a part of that is planning to Karen is going to walk us through the specific update. We're going to provide a fairly brief update tonight. In discussion with Commissioner Delwich or Chairman Delwich, excuse me. We did discuss that if there was a desire to have a more in-depth discussion and review of the update that we could consider potentially reconvening at a later date to do so. So it looks like Karen, you are here.
I am here.
Yes.
All right then. Shall I take over from here, Christine?
Yeah, that's absolutely fine. Thank you so much, Karen.
Okay, so I'm going to share the screen to bring up my patient. Well, thank you for inviting me this evening virtually. So I'm going to keep in mind with this update that some of you were involved in developing this plan. Actually, a good number of you. Alan was on the master plan and steering advisory committee and they actually initiated our in the master plan or plan manatee late 2015 and spent much of 2016 developing it and then adopted the plan in spring 2017. And so I was very involved in that process and more or less led the process and coordinated much of the community engagement. And so I'm still involved in plan implementation. My role has shifted somewhat, so I'm, I'm also providing a lot of support to the public works department. And I'm actually in that department. Um, Christine and I understand the importance of champion, championing this plan and I think we'll continue to work together to figure out how best to utilize my efforts in this plan. For state statute, the planning commission does take the lead role in developing the community master plan and provides the final recommendation on the plan, which was then approved by our city council. We did our plan a little bit differently. We understand that we're a community with a lot of natural hazards and this planning effort um, followed up on our 2013 flooding. And so we actually included a hazard mitigation plan in our planning process. And we brought our hazard mitigation recommendations into our master plan. So it was, it was quite a major undertaking. So as Christine noted, I'm going to primarily focus on implementation this evening. And implementation is a really key aspect of, of maintaining this as a living plan that the community wanted, a plan that's active, that's not sitting on the shelf. And so I'll cover what the community has accomplished in 2019 to 2020. And you can see in their staff report, there's a fairly fairly thorough review and look at priorities for 2021. And of course, want to hear your feedback questions. And then we'll, we'll share some next steps. So as we look at implementation, there are a lot of different stakeholders involved in the implementation process. City staff typically take the lead with most of the actions, but we work, work closely with boards and commissions who involve other community partners, perhaps regional partners. And some instances, community partners or groups might champion a plan action. And then a commission is involved with many planning activities. For instance, approving plans and major projects. And then city council provides more high level direction and is also involved, of course, in volunteering and, and funding for a number of these actions. Master plans are typically involved or organized around elements as we call them and they're kind of like chapters. And so we had, we have 11 elements in our plan. When we thought about implementation, we thought that was a lot. And so we decided to organize into what we called focus areas to make it a little bit more manageable. One of the key focus areas is community livability. And this is the, the graphic in the center and that incorporates a lot of different planning topics. And really they have in common that they relate more to community livability and a number of community groups are involved in, in these projects as well. Also a lot of overlap with environmental sustainability. So as we undertook this implementation update, we met with all of the department heads, both Christine and myself, who are leading plan actions. There's about 100 of them. And so this is just kind of a high level overview of our progress. And I think we've made a lot of progress in three years. We have completed on about 24, 25 actions. And a number of the actions have been started and we consider them to be ongoing. That is, we started them, maybe we do regular updates to a plan. Or it's an action that's like never quite finished. It's always ongoing. And so this year we have a number of actions that are underway. We have some that are planned for this year to be completed. And then we have a smaller number to be planned for 2021. We do know we're dealing with more budget constraints than typical this year. So I know that department heads are certainly taking that into consideration as they look at what they plan to accomplish for next. And so you'll see in the report that we prepared for this year, we did it a little bit differently. In the past few years, we provided the list of our actions. And I think we came to the conclusion that we were kind of missing some of the critical pieces with that. And so this year we took our six focus areas and we started out by identifying some of the key goals that underlay, underlie that focus area. And then we summarized our implementation approach, sort of the general strategies that we're using to achieve our goals. And then we provided an overview of the actions, knowing what's complete, what's underway, what's planned for 2021. So hopefully this was hopeful, was helpful. And I think what we're trying to do here too is to jump into a little bit of education to remind folks how to use the goals, how to refer back to the main plan. Because we want to make that certainly relevant for everybody as well. And so I think it's important to understand too, that we undertake actions and we learn some things by doing that. Sometimes things don't work as we thought. Sometimes actions take resources that we're not able to achieve. And so I think as we move forward with the plan, that experience will cause us to sort of rethink our strategy, to refine our strategy. And we'll get, we'll get better at implementation. Another important element of our implementation plan is metrics. And so a plan does include metrics. And these are ways to quantify deaths, for instance, in the cost of housing or the number of trips on Rux. To let us know if our actions are getting us in the right direction. And so we, we still have some work to do on this element of the plan. It's, it's fairly complex. We want to make sure that, that this is going to be a useful exercise. So we could do this a couple of different ways. I'm happy to go through the focus areas, but I'm also more than happy to entertain questions from you if there are certain things that you would like to focus. So maybe I should just briefly go through the different focus areas. Does, does that make sense, Christine?
I think so. If that's, if that works for the commissioners, I think that's, that's probably fine. Go, go ahead.
And yeah, I'll sort of provide a high level overview. You have a lot of information in your packet. And feel free to jump in and ask questions would be great. So I'll begin with resilience. See, this is really our, the hazard mitigation portion of our plan. And so we've done, we've done really a lot of work in this area. We have adopted community wildfire protection plan. And you probably remember last year, we adopted the planning for hazard code updates. It is a very robust plan and we have major hazards. So there's, there's still more work to do. And I, I always say that hazard mitigation is a constant learning process. We're always trying to get better data and really refine our approach to utilize our resources as efficiently as we can to try to reduce our hazard risk. We do have some major actions underway. One is the renovation of public works, which will allow us to move our emergency command up to that location. And another is a project that the planning department is spearheading, Christine and Dylan. And they've initiated participation with what's called the El Paso County Discovery Project. And these are resources that will assist their community to update our flood plain mapping. And these stars I consider to be priorities for next year. And some upcoming actions for us to think about are focusing a little bit more in our wildfire mitigation approach. Our fire department has conducted some additional research and we may want to reconvene our hazard mitigation steering committee to rethink our priorities a little bit. And regardless, this is one area where staff capacity is, is definitely needed for implementation. This is a hazard mitigation plan is housing. So I know some of you are, are very involved in housing. We have a housing advisory board that is a relatively new board. It was created shortly after our plan was adopted by city council. And I, I consider this to be a very active board. They pursued a lot of different plan policies and actions and really left no stone unturned. And so one of their major efforts has been to reach out to local and regional housing organizations and they, they have built a partnership with a nonprofit that has led to a new city program for energy efficiency improvements for managing spring. Far next to this because I consider this a significant accomplishment. I think every time one of our boards forms a new relationship with an organization like this that provides funding is big. And also the housing board is working on a draft housing code. An upcoming action is to propose an updated rental registration program to help supplement our enforcement. Mobility, which really incorporates all transportation modes and parking and congestion management. And this is a focus area that's been of significant interest in the past year. And I know is a priority of council coming up in 2021 as well. And so my work for public works also supports this this plan goal. And so some of our completed and underway activity that is significant includes that we purchased technology for real-time parking updates so that our visitors can get real-time information when we're parking available. The many roadway corridor projects that are underway. Incline management plan. We have a new reservation system underway, which goes directly to some of the goals related under that plan. An upcoming action for 2021 is to further explore parking management options, possible structure at higher water bird. And the next is economic vitality. And again, this is focus area, but it is very interrelated with all of our other plan elements. And honestly, I think almost all of our city departments really support economic vitality through their efforts. So we are really working with the backdrop of COVID-19 and the impacts that that's had to some of our small businesses. And so we have activity underway to provide grant support to some of those businesses and look at some alternative approaches for, for social distancing, for instance, for restaurants. And a recently completed action was executing a memorandum of understanding between the city and creative, the creative district to better refine what, what that relationship will be and what we expect from that involvement. And we've engaged a new creative district director who's providing support for economic development. We're also commissioning some analysis on our economic development activity. Upcoming, upcoming actions include historic district and interpretive signage. And a list of other, I would say, ongoing actions that, that we can continually revisit and that I think we'll share with our new creative district director. So next is community with ability. And again, this is a very broad topic that encompasses a number of different themes from the master plan. And those include arts and culture, education, health and wellbeing, historic and cultural resources. How we govern and engage with our community and some aspects of our natural environment. One of the plan actions that we were happy to complete this year is what's called a food assessment. A comprehensive food assessment where we look at our food environment and areas of vulnerability. And how we can enhance access to fresh local foods. Big part of that was understanding our involvement with some of our regional partners. And one of those partners has stepped up to. Provide monthly food distribution, that's Karen Chair Food Bank, and so that's been ongoing. We also consider community engagement with this, this focus area. We know that it's important and we want to be clear about how we're going to continue to incorporate community engagement into, into our projects. And so we've clarified that it's important to really integrate that into project planning early on. An upcoming, upcoming action is what's called the Beehive. And this is going to be a brick and mortar behavioral. In our art center and also ongoing Creek Walk Trail construction. So last but not least is the built environment. And this really focuses on plans, tools, projects related to our built environment. Our historic and cultural resources and some aspects of our infrastructure, for instance. Our, our planning for our infrastructure, our capital planning. So it's a big year, I would say. For, for this topic primarily because our development code update project is underway. And I know that's been, been a priority for some time. And we do have some specific actions within the plan that will be addressed. And really the plan. That is planned, managed to will, will provide guidance across all different planning areas to really help inform. This development code update, for instance, for economic development, for community infrastructure. And so also within this focus area, we talk about the need to assess our resources. The need to champion the plan with our boards and commissions and our public. And to have the capacity to continue to implement actions. There are some on hold projects in built environment. It's, it's a pretty robust section of the plan. And one of these is the historic resource inventories. And so as I understand it, we'll put the process for this project in place this year. But the actual inventories will put people on hold. And then also I consider part of, part of the actions this year to really be working with Christine and planning staff. To, to just think about our forward action on the plan and, and be well coordinated. So looking forward, we. Are really looking to get your comments and questions and input on, on the plan and priorities this evening. And we have scheduled a similar presentation for council on September 29. At that presentation will hopefully provide some more information on budget alignment. How budget requests can help support some of our plan actions. And also it'd be very appropriate if you have some comments you'd like to share or if you'd like to attend that meeting as well to. To represent the planning commission that, that would. And then I think on staff's end. We are. Getting close to, I think what we call our short term implementation. Schedule. We're at three years. We're going to extend it out another year. And I think at that point, we'll probably do some reassessments. We'll think about whether we want to work with the plan that we have and, and maybe come up with some more actions based on our goals and policies. We might, might want to consider some amendments. We might reach out to see if boards and commissions think that we should tweak the plan a bit. Certainly things are always changing. We've also thought about updating the plan, which is, you know, a more comprehensive effort where we, we look at data again. And do more involved community outreach. And we've thought that, well, that could happen in 2022. At that point, we would have 2020 census data and that would be five years out from our plan. That's, that's considered. So I, I hope that was helpful and I hope that. The report that we provided in that particular format was useful as well. And it would be great to hear any feedback you have about that or if you have any, any specific question.
Karen, this is David Armstrong. I've got to say that I think it's quite remarkable that our small planning department in our small town. And when we're being faced with some, some pretty serious unforeseen issues. Is taking such a comprehensive look and on so many fronts. That's, it's why I love planning and I'm much encouraged. Thank you.
Well, that's great to hear. Thank you.
Karen, I completely agree with what David just said. But you, you, you mentioned that the possible parking structure in Hiawatha. Does that mean that the one downtown by the stagecoach is off the table?
By the stagecoach? Oh, at the Wichita lot.
Right.
You know, I, I don't know for sure. I only know that I've not heard a lot of discussion about it lately. And probably, probably planning is in a better position than I am to.
That's fine. I was just curious. And then you mentioned real time parking. Is that related to those new digital signs that are up at the parking lots?
It is, it is.
And who, who is the driver behind that?
Um, well, the city's parking department will be implementing that. And so we have purchased the equipment as they understand it. And there's still a lot to be done with the software. And so on the user end, they'll have an application also that where they can track parking.
I could, I can comment a little bit on this too, Mike. So coming out of the transportation and mobility planning process and then the work group that was working on that for. I, I think our last in-person meeting was just before COVID sent us all home. There were several action items that we thought if we could implement, we being the city could implement for 2020. Would, would give us some great tools to try to mitigate. Unmanaged traffic that was coming in. Unfortunately with COVID, we didn't get to implement all the steps that we wanted to, to manage parking. It was just really tough. We didn't have, well, we didn't have all the resources. We didn't have as much traffic coming into town to be able to test these things out. One of those items was exactly what you just brought up, those digital boards. It took us a bit of time as well to get those in. They were on backorder. Again, supply chain issues. So once those came in, we began installation, which was just a couple of weeks ago. Yeah, there is quite a bit on the backside of that with regard to software, like Karen said. So, yeah, so, so the parking staff are the ones implementing it. The driver behind it comes from the recommendations that came out of the transportation and mobility plan. With regard to Wichita or Hiawatha. There, there is, no decisions have been made. Nothing has been ruled in or out at this point. I think we're still in a, a data gathering mode on that. For instance, I was over at Hiawatha last week with a variety. A diverse group of contractors looking for an updated estimate and game plan. On what can be done with the building or not done with the building. So I wouldn't say that Wichita or Hiawatha are ruled in or out for parking structures. We're just probably a solid five months behind schedule where we wanted to be gathering data on those areas.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, you bet.
And, and then Karen. On that energy resource centers with brothers redevelopment, how would somebody? Learn about that and access those funds? I, I assume they're income restricted and there's requirements, but how is the word getting out?
So if I recall correctly, and Michelle could probably provide more information on this. The housing advisory board mailed a postcard. Every homeowner about the program. Is that, you recall, Michelle, is that correct?
I think Michelle had to drop off.
Oh, okay.
So, but no, you are, you are correct. I mean, there was, I think Alan is going to speak to, I see him talking, but he's muted.
Yes, I, a postcard was mailed out to everybody in the city. And they got a number of. Responses and part of the challenge was with the restrictions based on the pandemic. It, they, they weren't able to do a lot of the inside work that was planned, but basically that. That was a limiting factor and they moved ahead as they could. And to answer your question, yes, there were criteria based on income. Were income restrictions for that work. And, and the person to really get a lot of detail, if you want more, would be to talk to Corinne. She's, she's really probably well versed on that.
Thanks.
Your tip, I see your hand up, you unmute like I need.
Thanks so much, Karen, for the presentation and it, after all the work of putting together this plan. I'm really cheered by how much progress has been made. It's actually quite incredible echoing David Armstrong. And, and it's very exciting. This is just a small thing that I would urge people very strongly to take off the notion of a possible plan. Like a new plan in 2022, that's a year and a half out. And given that the last one, putting the plan together took quite a bit of time, several years. A lot of money, huge investments and on the part of all of the communities. I wouldn't, I would think that timeframe is too short to undertake another comprehensive plan. I would much prefer that we see where we are, we do the metrics, we do an assessment, we figure out, as you said. What amendments to make or maybe try to get, gather the resources to do some of these larger issues. That just seems to me, I think of some, such an undertake, like, and the whole code. I mean, that's a huge, huge undertaking as well. To me, something like every 10 years is reasonable. So when I saw, I really loved the presentation, but when I saw that, I started to get very nervous. And so I just wanted to express, express that caution.
What point well noted. And I think the idea was not a full plan, but more, more of an update. But I. I definitely, definitely hear what you're saying. And, and we still have a lot to work with in this plan. We have a lot of goals and policies and we could certainly. Evaluate where we are with those and come up with different actions and refining strategies would make a lot of sense.
Yeah, well stated, Karen. You know, one of the challenges, Tip, that, that I've seen. That staff have been faced with is, is how to inspire the departments. And various entities throughout the city to see this as not just a plan that was developed. And, and gives us guidance, but also there are aspects of it to where they're living and breathing. And Karen, Karen and I have spent, you know, spent a little bit of time trying to think about that. And, you know, and I, I think what may come out of that is exactly this, you know, some sort of an extension with some, with some updates. But no, you're spot on. I mean, to think about 18 months out with a brand new plan. And doing a code rewrite and historic survey process gives me a lot of anxiety too. Well, excellent point, Tip.
And also I was just thinking about the fact that we have a list of what we call long range actions in the plan as well. And for these, the actions that were, are in our implementation plan are short term, are, are priority actions. So we have this whole other batch of actions. Some of those have sort of spontaneously moved forward, but we can always, always refer to those as well.
Okay. Any more comments or thoughts? Okay, well, I think it's. It's been a long night. If there are any more comments, is there anything else? Any other business? I think this has been a great presentation and. Let's just keep working on it.
Yeah, thank you so much. We encourage you, I, I just want to reiterate what Karen said is that. We encourage you later this month to attend that city council presentation. And we're hoping for, for points that are as. As smart and relevant as what you guys have brought up tonight. And so it's, I think it's important for planning commission from a strategic perspective to, to participate and continue to. To guide council on how we implement this. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Looks like we don't have any council action noticed and updates, so. Is there anything else anybody wants to throw out before we close up? I see Mike raising his hand.
Is there any chat about getting back to in-person meetings?
I can, do you, I can speak to that from a city perspective. So we've had a variety of perspectives and actions taken. Some groups have, have expressed interest in coming back together. I believe HAB is one of them, for example. Others have not. For those who wanted to meet in a socially distanced way. We are providing that in Memorial Hall. And then the meeting can be put on Zoom. For those who wish to participate, obviously in Memorial Hall, we do have a very limited number of participants that could attend. Once we, once we get done with social, you know, the social distancing and having spaces, it, it does prevent a unique challenge. We're in the process of, the city is in the process of looking at the appropriate communications equipment. So that we can broadcast that in a smart way so that people could participate. We're, we're a bit challenged with that right now, so I'll be blunt about that. Other boards and commissions that have had any discussion have chosen, may have chosen to remain online. Council at this time remains online because of the challenges we face with IT equipment. And the. Speakers and that sort of thing. So I, I could, so from a city perspective, we will support what this group. Or any other group wants to do. But, you know, I'll be blunt about our resource deficiencies.
Good tip.
Um, Christine, has the city. Done an evaluation of the air circulation system? The more I read, the more it seems that is key to providing a safe environment. So I just wonder what the state of the city hall is like in that regard.
That's a really good question, Tip. An air circulation analysis has not been done in Memorial Hall. When we've had small groups meeting in there, we have kept windows open and the door into the main breezeway. To ensure that there was circulation. But from a closed room perspective, no, we have not done any evaluation in there.
Yeah, I think that what I heard when I talked to the city administrator was the comment that there are a lot of people who aren't even leaving their houses. So in order to accommodate them, we would have to have some kind of a hybrid system. And that's the challenge with the IT equipment, just to Zoom and to be in public. It, it's real hard. In fact, I, I tried to attend a HAB meeting that was in Memorial Hall. And I tried to call in and it was worthless. I couldn't participate, I couldn't hear. And so it's a real daunting task. And you know, especially with the historical nature of pandemics and what we learned from 2019, 18 and, you know, potential surges in the, or, you know, second wave in the fall. And it's just, it's, and I think it's going to be a while before a lot of people will be comfortable coming back into a, especially a closed building with antiquated air circulation system. Any other questions or thoughts before we adjourn? So if, if nothing else, and oh, Jane, were you just waving goodbye? Okay, goodbye, everybody. The meeting's adjourned.
Good night, everyone. Stay safe. See you soon.
Thanks.
Just waving goodbye, but, but happy.